Being a little after seven o'clock, I call this board of appeals meeting open. And the first item are meeting minutes. Anybody have any changes, deletions, additions?
Can I make a motion we approve as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is 487 Groton Road, which we have to vote to postpone to our next meeting. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Next item is 55 Cold Spring Road. Yes, please. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Tell us who you are and what you want to do.
My name is Pamela Sulka, and I would like to increase the size of my non-conforming garage, so my car can fit into it. It is only 2.9 feet from the existing property line as it was existing prior to the zoning bylaws. And I didn't, I thought that the rule was that you needed to stay on the footprint. So I understand that you had a question about possibly moving it further away from, from this, the stone wall as the sideline, the property print. And that, I have no real problem with that, other than I would prefer not to move it too much, so to, I would rather not incur the cost of redirecting my driveway that much. So I saw the email sent by Jeff just today, Jeff Hanaford, who did the plot plan. And you can see on, on the screen above you that it is a little cattywampus, and he proposed that perhaps if we just moved that back end out a little bit, that would then allow me to go straight in on the current driveway, and would give me enough room. I have done work on the side of, going up a ladder on the side of that, that side particularly, because that's where all the pine needles gather. And I wasn't, I wasn't, I was within my side of the property line on the, on the ladder at that time. So if we moved it out just that little bit, just to kind of swing that end so that it was more perpendicular to the, to the property line, I'd be willing to do that, but I'd rather not move it. I mean, and if that's, that could be about five feet, I didn't do it. Jeff did say that there was plenty of room between a five, moving it out five feet and the new cess, I mean, the new septic tank and septic leaching field, which is right about, about where he had proposed it. He didn't have the as-built yet, but he did send that email that said that he thought that there was plenty of room. The existing cess pool will be pumped and filled with sand when it, when, when I switch over to the, the new system.
Okay. He actually said you could move it 15 feet without encroaching on the septic system.
Right. And I'd prefer not to do that, as you can see, my lot is, is quite narrow, and that would put it in the middle of my backyard.
So, is my, my understanding is you're gonna tear this thing right down, the old garage?
Yeah.
Tear out the slab?
Yeah.
Put in a new slab, new fi, new everything?
Yeah.
Okay. I understand your concern about the driveway. However, you're gonna lose seven feet of the driveway because you're making it seven feet bigger.
Correct.
And then some, because unless you get a really skinny guy that does concrete forms, you're gonna dig a trench to get the forms in. So my guess is you're gonna, that, you're gonna disrupt from the, from the front of the garage, back 10, 12 feet easily, probably more.
From the back?
From the front, so.
From the front.
From, from the front edge of the garage.
Yes.
Into your driveway, that you don't want to disturb too much.
Right.
You're gonna lose 15 feet.
Possibly, yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, so the, the dri, I understand the driveway thing, but I, I really, I, I really think that even though you were able to get a ladder up to the side of the smaller garage in height. I think with a new garage that's 21 feet, and I'm not good at geometry, because you gotta do this, you know, you, you need a little more than 2.9 and 5.5.
So how, what are you, how much are you proposing from the, from the existing?
Well, if you want 15 feet, you wouldn't have to be here.
But that's not what we want.
But I'd prefer not to go 16, 15 feet, because that would put me in the middle of my yard.
I understand. I'd be, I'd be comfortable with a lesser amount, but I, I just think that, you know, those dimensions that currently exist are not, not acceptable. I mean, I just can't get into that. You know, and, and Ellen will tell you that, you know, even your own house across the street, they were in front of us before, because that sits right on the line. And they, and they got into a ruckus with the neighbor because he was putting the ladder up there to try and paint the house, and it caused the whole big world of problems.
That was before I.
Yeah, yeah, no, it was way before you, yeah, I'm trying to think of the guy's name.
Peter Layton.
Yeah, Peter Layton. And then, so, is this gonna have a second floor, the garage?
Half, just, just enough for some storage.
Okay, so it's gonna be storage?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the board, comments?
I guess if you were to move it, I mean, what, did you, have you had any thoughts of getting it clo, further away from the line?
I was under the impression that it had to be on the existing, the existing footprint, so I, I, I'd never, it never came into my head, because that was, that was, that was my supposition. So my thought was just to extend it out to the front and out to the side, so it wasn't really changing from what it has been for the last 100 years.
So you really haven't thought about that?
No, no.
Have you cleared the snow in the winter time? Do you have your driveway plowed?
Yes. Well, no, I have a snow blower. No, I did, I did for the season that I, that I didn't have a snow blower, and they just went into the, into the yard, but now I have a snow blower.
When I first were looking at this, I said, well, if you take that 24 by 24 box, and what you can see is the right-hand property, of the right-hand side of the garage, and made that the left-hand side, you could bring your driveway right up and have the garage doors facing the berth holds.
I don't think there's enough room to turn, actually. I don't think there's enough room to turn. And, and part of the, the thing that I would like to do is to be able to turn around so that I can get out frontwards. It's kind of tricky sometimes to see coming out onto Cold Spring Road, so I, I would prefer to be able to turn around and come out straight.
Any idea how wide your driveway is now?
Not very.
So you're gonna, you're gonna have to add to your driveway regardless of where you put this to, to get.
You can see that little, that little.
Turnaround.
Turnaround. I made that with some, some star pack.
Yeah.
So that was going to stay.
But do you, do you want to have blacktop in front of both of your garage doors?
Um, my thought was honestly to just to do a little, a little addition with some, with some pavers, that made it a little bit more attractive, you know, from what, the new part. I know that they'll have to take some off, so at that addition, whatever they take up, I assumed there would be a little bit more taken away, and so I was just thinking that I'd just add pavers with a little bit of an extension over to the, the second bay.
Mm-hmm. So how far is, about, how far is the garage from the house?
About 25 feet.
That's all? Okay.
That's a guess? It may have been more by 30.
If you look at Pam, where it says 26 feet, eight inches for the width from there to there.
Oh, so that's more than that.
It must be 40 to 50.
Probably, yeah, more like 50.
Yeah, about 50, doesn't it look like, Joe?
Yeah. I'm just thinking, but, I mean, it's up to you for convenience sake in the middle of winter. If I were doing a garage, I'd want it closer to the house, bringing in the groceries and...
I couldn't do that when I was in the planning, because it wasn't my intention always to change the cess pool.
Yeah, yeah, but now you're going.
Now that you are, yeah. I mean, turnaround could be where the garage could go.
Yeah.
Can I just speak to this? I thi, I think the plan that is before you.
Could we have your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry, Ellen Hardy from 39 Main Street, and not in a butter, butter from the fans. And so I've worked with her very closely, she's put together this plan, and this was not done in haste. You know, Pam has lived in the house now for two, four years. And has given a lot of thought as to how to do the garage, and in addition, she ultimately hopes to put on the house. So, and putting in a new septic system, knowing that the cess pool had a limited life. So this has been done with a great deal of thought in terms of how Pam lives in that house now, with one car, and just needing a garage. The 1935 building that was there was about to fall down and has in fact gone. So I would propose that what you look at is Pam's plan, and if you disapprove it, let her know why, but I would ask you not to redesign her property for her at this point, because what she's putting before you is how she wants to live at 55.
And also, I did think, I, my original thought was, yes, in New England, I'd rather have an, an attached garage. When I attach it to the end of the house, I have to take off a very cute little shed, because it no longer fits. It's a shed dormer at the end of that, that long structure. And then also, it has to be so much further in, so that I can turn around, and then it blocks my entire yard from my house, so I'd look out my kitchen window at the back of a garage.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I have thought of that, and I just kept coming back here. And I, I tried to rework the garage, but it kept falling over. I mean, there was a hole in the roof, and, and in the ceiling and the walls, and so it just, it wasn't feasible.
Unfortunately, if you put it back where it is right now, soon as you start digging, you're gonna lose that stone wall, you're gonna lose all that survey control, because it's all sand where you live.
Well, I've got, I've got, Bob Johnson was going to do the site work for.
Doesn't matter who you dig, I'm just telling you.
I, I had talked to him. I have talked to the, to the historic commission, and, and their rule was that I maintain the stone wall. So I, I would of course do whatever needs to be done to maintain the stone wall.
But it's a cost that you shouldn't really, if you can avoid it, you know, if it means shifting it away from the wall a few feet, so you don't have to go and replace the stone wall.
Yes, and, and, and I, if I get permission to do that, I, I wasn't under the assumption that I had, that I could even look at doing that, other than going 15 feet, and that I didn't want to go 15 feet. If you are happy with me going within 15 feet to accommodate the stone wall, you know, of course I'll do that. I mean, I'm a rule follower, I, I've, I've jumped through every hoop that's.
You're gonna have to add to your, your current driveway, once they repair it, to run up to the, the garage.
Yes.
So why don't you go over 10 feet? You're gonna have a little dogleg, but you're gonna be backing up into that, that turnaround you've got. I don't think that'd be that inappropriate for you. And, and, and I think that would resolve a lot. I would vote for 10 feet for you, but.
Is that, is that your, but that, that's not, you know, where Pam wants her garage and how convenient she wants for the turnaround is the homeowner's decision, and I, while we appreciate your concern for that, I, I don't think.
We all have restrictions. I'm a, I'm a homeowner, and I have restrictions that I can't, I can't change.
Right, but that's why she's here, is to ask for that.
I understand that. We're trying, we're trying to make it so it's convenient for her as well.
Yeah.
And be efficient for her, and not detract from her property. I mean, if, if, see, she's in a position, she has room to do this stuff. Other people that come to us don't have the room, and then that's what we have to vote on. What are we gonna do to resolve the problem? But she's got a solution to her problem, she just chooses to do something different.
Mm-hmm. To not block the view from her house, so that she can still see her yard. Well, what she would be doing if she moves it over, she's blocking the view from her house, so she can't, the backyard, and it's used to her, become very different, Paul.
Well, that's, is that a porch in the back there?
No.
Addition?
No.
No.
What's that jog all day? I can't.
It says patio.
Patio.
But from the house.
You wouldn't obstruct from that patio view out there.
But I don't live on my patio.
She lives in the house. I mean, the four to five, but I just think 10 is a stretch.
I'm giving you a number, I don't care what the number is.
Okay, well, Scott.
I'm trying to work it so that she could do what she wants to do, and we could probably vote on it.
Thank you.
Other comments? Anybody else got a number?
Well, the existing is five, right?
2.9.
Jeff's just saying, straighten the garage, instead of leaving it at that angle, and you're five, you're five along the wall.
Correct.
I mean, I think Jeff's got a good suggestion.
I'm, I'm happy with that.
I mean, it's a minor adjustment.
I'm happy with.
Probably easier for you to, as, as, as Scott said, to access it when you need to for, you're gonna be painting it or whatever, you're gonna be doing it. Clear me something off.
I like Scott.
You don't have an issue with the.
The only issue he, he's brought up was you're going from 11 feet high to 21 feet high.
Right, exactly, exactly. So that, but, so you're gonna need more than 2.9 feet, and five's not a huge.
You're gonna need more than five to get a ladder up 21 feet?
Probably.
Where's, where's the math guy, the engineer? How many, what's the, what's the fulcrum of a?
Make it six feet even, and see what that does.
I mean, I don't think it's, I mean.
I mean, it's semantic.
The end of the garage is, it looks like the driveway is approximately five and a half feet, five, five and a half feet, so.
Well, in truth.
It's gonna be a wider. You're gonna need to widen that driveway anyway, because you're gonna have a bigger garage, so you don't want.
Correct.
You want a, a pan of pavement to the right-hand side of that driveway.
Yeah.
Um, and if it's straight, I mean, I think if you straighten the garage, and, you know, getting the ladder up there, well, if you haven't got more than 5 feet, that's your problem. You've lived it, now live with it, I mean, I.
In truth, she doesn't have to use a ladder, she could use pole, pole stations, and you know, you put the ladder on the end of the station and go up, so you'd be within your 5.5.
Yeah.
So.
There, there are ways to paint a house or a building without 24-foot ladders.
I'm not, I wasn't concerned about painting the building, I was concerned about her encroaching on Berthold's property. That, that's the concern, it's not whether you paint the side of the building, I mean, that's, we don't care about that, but we just don't want to see you, you know.
And it.
Encroach on them, and they're probably nice people, and they would probably say, Pam, not a problem. However, we can't make that decision. So I have a technical question. Do you know if the stone wall is the lot line, or is it the lot line?
Lot line.
So the middle of the stone wall is the lot line? Or is this, all the stones on your side?
Um, part of the stones are on my side. At the garage forward, it is, it is the lot line.
And how wide is that wall?
It's hard to tell, especially by the garage, there's a lot of pine trees, pine dirt, dust, whatever, and so the, the wall is not that high anymore. I suspect that it is much deeper below the level of the ground. But it's only a big stone wide, it's not several stones piled up wide.
Maybe a foot, 16 inches?
16 to 18, possibly.
Okay.
Do you not have a letter of support from the Bertholds for the application? Didn't they write you a letter?
Yeah, we do.
So they're, they're not concerned about that, Scott?
And I know this is, it just seems a little day late and a dollar short, but why wasn't any of this considered when, when Hyacinth went in? Why, why am I, the person who lives in that house, at, at, you know, having, you know, to have this issue, when I had nothing to do, or the person who lived there at the time had nothing to do with where, where that line went in, where the Hyacinth got so close? I mean.
Well, don't you think that lot line was there bef, long before Hyacinth went in?
It was probably Marilyn Days, or the Day family. So, yeah, it was the Day family.
Right. So, I mean, that, that really doesn't.
Yeah, I guess. It just seems, it's, their house is very far away, and this is back in a wooded area.
Yeah.
They can't even, in this time of year, they can't even see my property. They have a shed just off about maybe 35 feet diagonally off the corner that is in the woods behind their house. They keep all their trash behind their shed. I, you know, have no issue with it, because I can't see it through my garage. I can see it, you know, later, when I walk behind my garage, I mean, there's.
You have a bigger garage that blocks the view now, so that's.
Possibly, if this goes well.
So would eight feet kill you?
No, probably not, no. I mean, I have a feeling that foundation work may, does that, is that inclusive of the foundation, or does the foundation have to lie outside of that eight feet?
That's a good question, Joe, how do, what do you?
Yeah, if you would like the, the proposed setback to be eight feet, that would be measured from the edge of the foundation.
Yeah, because the sills will sit on the foundation.
Yeah. So there's gonna be eight feet between the wall and the garage?
That's still gonna force her to do something with, with the existing driveway more than.
If she stays where she is, she's still gonna have to do something with the driveway.
No, no, I mean, it's gonna, if she comes forward with the garage, it's still, it's still a three-foot difference. The pavement's gonna be here, and the garage is gonna start there. Garage is gonna, there's gonna be a pave, a piece of pavement that go, if she cuts it off, or it's existing, there's gonna be a piece of pavement to the left-hand side of the garage that goes nowhere. She's gonna have to.
Could be a drip edge, too. Could be a walkway to a side door.
Side door's not on that side.
Could be a space to have a drip edge as well, for any runoff off the roof.
I mean, I just think she's gonna, if she, if you do more than 5 feet, she's gonna incur some driveway expense, that.
Also somehow.
Those will have to be adjusted. Also driveway's gonna get ripped up as soon as Bob comes in with his excavator.
I understand, but it's going straight, and it's, it's gonna go straight, and then the garage is gonna be over this way. So somehow.
There'll be a two and a half foot.
More of the driveway's gonna be torn up to curve into the garage, because it's totally straight, looks totally straight now.
It is.
Looks like it's a totally straight driveway.
It is.
So if we move it over eight feet, there's gonna have to be some kind of right-hand jog in a, in a pavement redo, redone to get into that garage.
But they're gonna have to patch in front of the garage, no matter what they do.
Yeah.
Because when they finish putting the slab down and cut the con, the asphalt back far enough.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a gap there.
Yeah, there's gonna be a significant amount.
But if you only have five feet, and they're digging a foundation wall, where are they gonna put the fill when they dig that, that side of the wall with only five feet?
Well, you're gonna be a two and a half foot little, it'd be grad, you could gradually turn into, you don't have to go like a straight dogleg over two and a half feet.
All right, well, we're getting out of our, here. What's the flavor of the board? Five feet, eight feet, 15 feet? David, you've been silent, what are you?
Well, I think you settled at eight. I think you could be talking for days, but eight feet sounds like a compromise that the applicant would live with, and more would live with, so I, I, I'd like eight.
Any other numbers?
I'm okay with the five. I mean, for, with the just suggestion, I think was, makes it probably simpler for her, in the long run. And it's been, since 19, 1930s, I don't know that three more feet's gonna make a hell of a big difference for the next 50 years, but.
It looks like the existence is 5.5, so, I mean, the only reason we, we're trying to get a little more distance there is whoever, you may not have an issue, but whoever moves into your house after an issue, and it just causes less issues between the neighborhoods, and that's, if there's something we can help now.
There hasn't been a big issue in the last 150 years.
Well, I mean, well.
No one has a crystal ball.
Is that a motion, Jay?
Well.
The only time this has come up that I can recall is down across from One Main, and this was back in John Katigan's day, and the guy wanted to go right to the line, and he couldn't put his, John said, you can't put the ladder there to paint.
You know, I.
So eight feet, eight feet is a good compromise, guys, don't beat it to death.
I'm, I'm fine with eight feet. Is that something you?
We prefer the 5.5, but. That's why the application was for that.
Well, it looks like you're gonna have to do some paperwork anyway. You got a two-car garage, you're gonna have to extend the width of the driveway to accommodate the additional width of the garage.
Gonna go at least another eight feet over for that second lane.
But then that jogs, I mean, I, yes, I was, I was, I knew I was going to have to make it wider on that side.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
But shifting the whole thing makes my driveway then go.
You're gonna have to shift it sooner, sooner than later, a little, little 10 or 15 feet before that. You're gonna have to do a little driveway alteration if it's eight feet.
The 5.5 parallel of the wall would be the ideal compromise that we'd love to see.
You know what, I'll drop an, go six feet straight back, that's not gonna change that much for anybody.
It's fine.
Well, it's five and a half now, so now we're talking.
We're beating it.
It's five and a half, I mean, we're, now we're talking a half a foot.
Well, when you wanna start painting and stuff, and you're gonna put a pole jack up, so paint.
I understand, Paul, but if you're talking eight, I mean, existing is five and a half at the, at 5.5, according to this plan. And that's what, you know, Jeff is suggesting, just kind of straighten it out.
You'll never notice that six inches going over into that garage, going into the driveway.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, six or five and a half.
Any, any other, any other conditions that anybody wants to talk about?
Well, demolition, we always say, has to be.
So, yeah.
Removed within, I'm sure that'll happen anyway, within 30 days, it's a standard condition. Once you start demolishing it, you gotta get it out of there, I'm sure it'll be out of there.
It's gone.
Oh, it's gone?
It's gone.
Oh, you turned the garage down already?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, it's already removed.
I, I got a permit through the town.
Okay, all right.
Never mind.
That's, that's.
It was still there.
That's a nice starter.
Okay. And then the only other condition would be that the second floor not be used for a residence.
No, it's just storage, I just need some storage to get rid of my storage unit.
So, do we have a motion from somebody with some kind of dimension?
We should close the public hearing.
Yeah, so, is there anybody in the audience to speak in favor of this? Anybody in the audience to speak opposed to this? Not seeing any. There were no other conditions? Okay.
Go down. Go down, closing the hearing.
Yeah. So can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So who moves?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, who wants to make a motion at 5.5, or 6, or whatever the number is supposed to be here?
I'll make a motion at the 5.5.
Second.
Paul?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I'll also vote in for him. So you, they have, the staff has 14 days to write the decision.
Okay.
There's a 21-day appeal period. So don't start swinging the hammer until after 21 days.
Okay.
And talk to staff, they'll get you hooked up with all the paperwork and everything you need, and you're good to go.
All righty. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we're on to general business. We have a request for minor modification on two fifty-two Broughton Road. This was that house that, um. Pool was in the wrong spot, the shed was in the wrong spot, half the house was in the wrong spot because Oakmont.
Side road there or something, yeah.
Oakmont was an accepted road, no one knew it.
Yeah.
So the story is they got the pool in and then they're missing five feet.
Yeah, correct, yeah. Apparently, the pool installer made a decision based on the distance from the existing leach field out there to move it five feet. So instead of being twenty-six feet from the property line along Oakmont, it's now twenty-one feet. So the app gets requesting that the board find that as a, uh, not substantial change. They did move the shed, as was conditioned in the previous, uh, decision. But the, the pool is closer to that Oakmont, uh, property line.
Anybody have any questions about this?
Not a big deal, but they had an attorney here and they should've kinda been aware. They had to go get a permit and get that.
Is there supposed to be an inspection before they start pouring the gunite or whatever for these pools?
I think it's above ground.
Above ground.
Above ground.
But isn't there supposed to be an inspection at some point during this process to prevent stuff from like this happening?
So the, the homeowners did not obtain a permit, uh, to, to build the pool afterward. They got the approval from the board, but then they never went through the building department.
So they're in violation.
So upon, uh. You know, at, at some point, somebody discovered that the pool had been installed and then when it was checked for its distances, it was discovered that it was five feet closer to Oakmont.
Illegal pool.
So are we looking for a minor modification to the distance only?
Correct. Whether or not the five feet is a, a minor change or not a minor change. If you find it's not minor, then they would have to come back to you for another public hearing. If you find it's minor, then this would be the end of it.
Anybody have any comment as to whether it's minor or major? In my world, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, it appears to me it's minor because it's just, if we're talking about being closer to the road.
Hmm.
So, no, no harm involved.
Yep. Have you had any comments from neighbors or anything like that?
I mean, the board is a, a road, it's a.
It's more of a common driveway.
Common driveway, rather than a public road.
So Joe, when the, did the building commissioner say anything? When they, must he, he must have requested the plot plan that shows where that pool is?
I believe so. Um, I didn't have a conversation directly with the building commissioner, but I imagine that's where the plot plan came from. And when you compare it to what was approved by the board on the screen here, twenty-six and eighty-eight point two from the side property line there. Then you look at the asphalt, it's eighty-six, so slightly closer that way, and then five feet closer to Oakmont.
I just wanna make sure he looked at it and, you know, they have the, you know, correct ladder and stuff like that to keep the kids out. More than four feet tall, things like that. The safety things.
All right, so Joe, anybody need a vote on this?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, can we have, uh.
I'm moving to approve it as a minor alteration.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sixty Littleton Road. They haven't built this yet.
The board is happy with the landscape plan as proposed. Then, uh, staff will be having a pre-construction meeting with, uh, these folks here. They are looking to start within the next few weeks. I would guess prior to the end of June, just based on funding, that they have to show they have a shovel in the ground.
Oh, okay.
Um, but one of the last conditions is that the landscape plan be approved by the board.
So was the last plan, the landscape plan, that we're approving?
On the screen here, yeah, so.
Got the shrubs in the corner, yeah. So I guess the only concern that I had with this whole plan is they've got an area up towards the front, right down, oh, Joe, that box. See the white box? It's for the dumpster? Nope, down. Nope. Right, yes. This.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That was marked for the dumpster. Then they've got a, like a curb directly across from it. And the distance between the dumpster and the curb. How do you get a truck in there?
They won't get a truck in there.
I don't, I don't get that.
Plus, is that, is that, is that, what's in front of the dumpster? Is that?
It's gonna be fenced off, probably.
That's a sidewalk, isn't it?
It's no storage area.
Oh, okay.
Well. Maybe the answer to your question is, uh, like what they have down at headquarters. The dumpster's on wheels, so when the guys come with the truck, two of the pickers jump off the back and they push it out.
Oh, okay.
Then they can dump it and they push it back in, it's on wheels.
Okay. Just make, in your planning meetings, just make them aware that.
Yeah.
There's no way in hell they're getting that truck in there.
Do you know that for sure? No, no, I'm saying that's what they do down at the head, by headquarters. I don't know if that's the situation here.
Yeah, we can look to get that information for you, on the dumpster.
That looks like it'd have to be a pretty substantial dumpster for that many units.
Possible dumpster, but that's.
Well, I gotta figure out. There's only five units in this building, or six?
Yeah, but still. Which was the trash, isn't it?
How deep, how deep is that? I can't see how deep that is.
Nine feet. By fifteen feet, or eighteen feet.
No, that nine is for a parking space next to it.
Oh. Eighteen feet.
That's the width, but how deep is it?
So it's basically two parking spaces?
Yeah. Yeah, it's two parking spaces.
Twenty feet.
Okay, um, can we have a motion to approve the landscape plan? So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, that brings us back to our ADU. So this is the latest draft of what you were talking about, Joe?
Correct, and, uh, we went ahead, we sent it over to town council for their review. They had really minor comments. Um, the, it was just pertaining to this section right here, three point three point four, number one. Just to add some clarity on what is meant by the word size. So that's what the blue is here represented. Um, so it just specifies in terms of size, it's talking about gross floor area, the footprint of the building or the height. And then later on again, gross floor area or footprint. And that was it. Um, so really, town council didn't find any issue with any of the other proposed changes.
Town council hasn't sat at our meeting long enough. So under that, three point three point three, number one, it says a mortgage inspection survey properly adapted may be sufficient. I think that's a big eh. I think it needs to be a, a stamped plan because we've run into problems with mortgage survey plans before. There's no guarantee that it's gonna be right.
So you want a certified plot plan?
That's what I would think.
Yeah.
If you're, if you're doing something of that nature. And then under twenty-three, Board of Health, it says applicants are encouraged to seek Board of Health review prior to making the application. You know, enough of the feel-good. They're required to go to Board of Health, not, not encouraged.
That's how it is in a couple of other towns that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
You get the Board of Health blessing first.
And then, um, on three point three point four, number one. It says, um. It talks about heights of the units. And I think that it, you're, you're missing like a second floor here. If you had a second floor and you're not considering the heights. Because not all ADUs are first-floor applications. There's some could be, so all the garages, we've approved them.
Three point four, number one?
Right, so, yeah, so what, I guess the point is, let's say you have a, a house with a, a garage.
Hmm.
And the colonial part of the house is higher than the garage.
Hmm.
When you put the addition on, it might bring it above the height of the primary house.
Hmm.
This is saying you can't do that.
Right, otherwise they'd have to seek a variance from this board to be able to do that.
Right, and, and I mean, I don't think we care as long as it meets the, under the thirty-five feet, correct?
We could.
You know, so I think, I think height should be taken out of there.
Okay.
Although maybe that, maybe that does relate to, you know, appearance on, on three point, three point four three, appearance. This general structure.
When you want to say.
So not significantly altered the appearance of a signal family, so if they do do some super crazy height thing, then.
Yeah, but it's not.
This appearance thing may kick in to.
When you have not to exceed thirty-five feet.
Well, that's a building inspector's job.
Right, yeah.
The plan has to go before him.
We just missed it on two things already tonight.
But if someone exceeds, exceeds the height of.
Well, they're not exceeding the height of the building code. What happens is, you know, if you have a, a, even if you have a ranch house.
Yeah, right, right.
And you, and you put a, a two-car garage on within our apartment above it, you're gonna exceed the height of the ranch house.
Right.
But again, it, well, I mean, that, that whole thing about appearance is sort of a nebulous, uh, statement. Should not be significantly altered. I mean, that would be a significant alteration, probably, if you have a ranch house and you go up twenty-six feet. Garage or something over it. So, I mean, that would might be in, in conflict with this whole thing about, um. Appearance including structures such as bonds, garages and shed. I mean, that, that, the appearance thing is, I don't know, I.
Yeah.
That's kind of a jump ball and, and, and it's. I mean, I don't know how we would sit here and deliberate over the appearance of a, of a thing that was, we think it was too high or, you know, that, that, that's. That might be a little fraught with peril, that, that whole section, but, um, I think it, that, that does relate to the height thing. Someone could come in with something that's, as you said, a ranch house and then they put in a, put a significant addition over a two-car garage, then that.
Well, how does that affect the neighborhood?
Exactly, I don't know.
That's what I mean, that falls under affected to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
You can say no.
So.
It's not.
So what do you say, take it out?
The height?
The appearance?
Wouldn't they still have to come to us no matter what for the ADU so we'd have an opportunity to review the plan?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I believe the, the section on appearance was talking about having, say, like a separate entrance, if you're having a separate entrance from, or excuse me, to the accessory dwelling unit.
Mm-hmm.
So that way you're not having two primary entrances when you're looking at it from the road. Cause then it kinda gives the appearance of a two-unit structure as opposed to a single family.
Okay.
I believe that's what it was, what the intent was behind that section.
Do ADUs have to be adjoining?
No.
No.
No, they can be in a detached.
They, we're throwing, I mean, it doesn't have to have access from the main house to the ADU.
No.
They threw that out.
We've approved them that were freestanding.
No, there could be a bomb in the middle of a block there, right?
Boy, it's changed. We were wrong for one time. As long as they have to come before us, I think we're all gonna be.
Yeah.
So the.
We're gonna be dealing with it.
Ultimately, you would have jurisdiction over.
Right, yeah.
Being able to make design modifications.
So three point three point five, conditions for issuance of renewal of special permits. This is an area where I think we're, we're dropping the ball. When the ownership transfers to somebody else, the, the, um, that they wouldn't have to come back in front of the board to get, you know, the variance back. I mean, we do that now.
So right now, there's no, I don't believe there's any specificity about when they would have to submit that certification, so, you know, I. I had a house that had a, a single family with an ADU and I'm selling it to you, and now you need to submit some sort of certification. There's no clarity about that timeline, so that's, that's part of the section. And then the other part is, you know, if you're buying it with the intent just to continue using the single family with the ADU, um, you submit the certification that you're gonna live there within, you know, for at least six months out of the year. Is there a need to come back to the board for a new special permit? Or it'd be something that you'd wanna see at a public meeting, or not at all? So maybe not necessarily a whole hearing, but just a meeting with the board? Say, this is who I am, this is what I'm intending to do?
The ones we can catch, they come back. We had a couple earlier in the year that they had bought ones that had ADUs and they came in and got it. And, and I think what happens is, and I hate to pick on people, but there's a ton of misrepresentation by realtors about what these things really are.
Yep.
Ran into that, that, we had an after-the-fact one. Person bought a house and said, oh, yeah, it's a two-family. Well, it isn't a two-family.
No, no.
So that's why I think there has to be some clarification as to what you got and what you need to have done to keep it the way it is. I think that's good, cause then that. Then the person who owns it is aware that it's an ADU.
Right.
We don't get confused about being a two-family, right?
Right.
Yeah. You know, and hopefully on the assessing data cards that the town has. They're done right so that it's listed as an ADU, so at least someone stands a half a chance of finding out really what's going on.
Does that have to appear in a mortgage statement that it's an ADU?
I don't know.
I don't either, that's what I'm asking, I.
You would think the mortgage company would look into that though, right?
Yeah.
Well, you figure this, whatever the board gives out has to get recorded at the registry of deeds.
Yeah.
So the attorney should be able to pick up on it when he does a title search on the property.
Should be, or the realtor would see it as well, but.
Realtors, we all know what they want.
Oh, they wanna sell the house.
Right.
Yeah, that just gets, comes up in the title search, right?
Right, that should, that should jump right up when the attorney doing the title search.
All right, anything else?
So if they don't give you an affidavit within ninety days, it goes away. And then they have to come back and see us.
That's the way it's written here. Failure to submit within ninety days of transfer of ownership shall terminate the special permit, require a new one. So they would have to come back, whole new public hearing and everything if they don't submit that affidavit within ninety days of purchasing the home.
So they're just certifying that will not be extended, enlarged or altered?
Right, so that would mean they're just gonna continue to use it as it was approved before, they're not making.
Then they have to submit an affidavit to.
Same.
Again.
So if they wanted to.
They bought a house, they have an ADU and then they move in and they've got, you know, kids starting school.
Ninety days is a fishing.
Are they gonna know that, that that's that?
Yeah, I mean, we wanted to pick.
How's it gonna tell them that's the requirement?
Give a little bit of time.
It's a fishing amount of time to build that. They would know by then, they're probably buying it because it's an ADU.
Correct.
You know, so I mean, I.
They might know it's an ADU, but I'm not sure they'd know they have to file that affidavit. Who's gonna, who's gonna assure them that they better do that within ninety days? I mean, I just, that's a hypothetical, but, I mean, I'm sure some people might fall into the cracks on that and they come into us saying, we didn't know we had to do that affidavit, wow.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, that does kind of fall upon the, the title attorney, right? So, I mean, if you have this as a standard condition in anyone moving forward. It's incumbent upon them to, to know as they're doing their, their title search that.
Yeah.
When they submit that.
Joe mentioned a good point going forward. What do you do for all the ones that were approved five, six years ago?
Well, now this law would be, this would be in place, so if they sell that house from five years ago.
This wouldn't apply to that.
No, they're gonna be, they, they're not certified now.
Yeah, that would only apply if they sold it, right?
They could be renting the place for all we know.
Yeah.
Right, but if it's an ADU on record.
Hmm.
And that place is sold.
Who enforces that if we, if they have?
That's the number one question with everything in today's society, who enforces anything?
Yeah, but like, like, Dan's saying, if, if it's already been done like five or six years ago. It sells and they say, oh, you can rent this, make a rental. How we know?
Right, but the next time they sell it, it's gonna fall under this.
Right.
Right.
You can't go back and correct it, we just gotta make it go forward.
No, I, I agree, but.
Like when originally we're doing this, it followed the ownership, right?
Yeah, once, once you sold it, it was gone.
Right.
Right.
It did continue, yeah.
Isn't that still in play right now?
That's, that's how it is today.
Right.
And.
So it shouldn't.
This would change that. Before us five years ago.
If it, the state.
This would change that, they just have to file an affidavit.
Now?
Right?
This would change, this would change that from what it is today, which is as soon as it's sold, the special permit goes away, they have to come back. This is, if you're gonna, if you're buying a house with an ADU and you're not intending to make any changes to the property, you're looking to continue to use it as it is. So long as you submit this affidavit within ninety days, you can do that without having to come back to the board.
So the special permit still is an exception?
So the special permit still doesn't exist, it's.
If they wanted to do an addition or something like that, then they're coming back here.
Joe, how do they get notified that they've got ninety days to, to submit this?
That's what I just said.
How, how do you do it? How, how, I don't know how you police it.
Worst case is they have to come back before us and we say yes, 'cause nothing changed.
I mean, to Joe's point, they're doing that now, right? They've lost it, but they don't even know.
Yeah, but they could, they could have it as a rental property and no one would know.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, they went to go sell it again, they wouldn't have that, right?
Half the people buying them, I think, think they're gonna rent that property.
You're probably right.
It's, it's an income.
They can rent it, yeah, it's certainly, it's certainly what some people might have intended.
I mean, if you had staff, you'd, you'd go look at every closure and say, okay, here's your parameters, you know, but who does that? Joe, a little side job for you.
Guess what he's looking for?
Pick up some loose change, you know?
All right, so you got those changes, Joe?
Yes, I just wanted to get some clarification on one, three point three point four, number one, so you want the word height struck? And just have it be gross floor area or footprint?
Where is that again? On three point.
Three point three point four.
Yeah, I'd like height taken out of you because it's kind of, I don't think height is a factor.
Okay.
Well, they still couldn't exceed thirty-five feet though, right?
Correct, they would have to go further.
I think the height would be caught in other avenues.
Right, yeah.
Anything else from anybody? All right, do we have a motion to close this meeting?
Joe, second.
All those in favor?